Call the meeting to order and call them Council Brown. Please.
I pay allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the law.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Here.
Counselor Broughton.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Counselor Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a quorum to do business.
Under item five, public hearings, first item is to consider a 94.01 economic development grant to Ginnie Carter's Chug-Sow Food Spot. Call up overhearing order and see if there's anyone here that would like to speak against this grant. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of it? Hearing none, I close the hearing. Second hearing is to consider a liquor license for Mayhem LLC doing business at Bruton Package Two. I'll call the meeting to order. Anybody here that would like to speak against this license? Anybody here that would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, I close the hearing. Next public hearing is to consider permitting a mini warehouse storage units in a B3 general business district. All I mean to order is anyone here that wants to speak against this? Anyone here that wants to speak in favor?
If you'd least look through, I want to have three copies of this pass back. You would. It'll keep this less than 10 minutes. Right here. Get a look at it, pass it back.
I'm Scott Huff, and I've been a Brutonite for 50 of my 60 years. I presently live in Daphne. I do not live here. I want to cover four things for you. I want to cover a little bit of the history of the storage industry here in town. I want to cover a study I've done about how many units you have here versus surrounding towns. Number three, how I'm going to be a good neighbor to the people that live around this piece of property. And number four, how does this affect the city of Bruton as far as your pocketbook? So to start with, I was in front of this group in 1989, and I failed miserably. That's why we have one of the hardest zoning restrictions on storage in this town. Actually, in 1989, I wanted to build a storage, it was called mini storage, now we just call it storage. I bought a building permit up here, went out and bought some land with Bond's Ranch out here. I bought where the gas station is next to Bond's Ranch and built a building behind that gas station. The gas station, of course, wasn't there. The building inspector came out that day to watch us pour the foundation and said the storage industry was so new that there was nowhere, they didn't know where to put it. So he decided I didn't need to build it there. So we finished that building, and that was the last one ever built. Because we put them into the industrial areas. It's where the city decided to do that. So having said that, I hope I have better luck today than I did in 1989. The industry is actually larger now. If you're not a tourist town, you should have more square footage of storage units in your town than you do hotels. And we're not in a tourist town here. So you should have more storage units than you do in hotels. One in eight people today use storage, one in three families. So if I were to take a poll, there'd be somebody in this front row, and your family's using one today, and somebody in that top row up there. Storage units are going basically where you're putting a State Farm, a SCAMBI insurance. It's going in neighborhoods, by hospitals, churches. I'm going to give you a few examples. West Florida Hospital, when you drive to West Florida Hospital and pass it, you will pass one of the largest churches down there called Marcus Point right next to it. It's a donut shop and a very large mini storage facility. The Lowe's in Daphne just finished building a mini storage facility that touches their property. In Navarre, which is where I left here and went to, and so it was a blessing to me when I got booted out. I say that in kindness. In 1989, of course, that area boomed down there, so I've been there 32 years. They built a Publix next to me, and I can walk out of the office, walk across the street, walk into Walgreens, and walk around the corner into Regions. Greenville. I'm in Greenville, and I'm going to talk about Greenville a lot today. The pictures you're seeing there are the facility I have in Greenville. The one I have in Greenville, when I look to the right of me is a fire station, a nursing home, and then a bank. When I look the other way, it's a insurance company, a shopping center, and two banks. We have, in commercial real estate, three different classifications. We have A, B, and C properties. A property is something like a Holiday Inn Express or Hampton Inn. A B property is when that Hampton Inn gets 15 years old, and he goes and gets a Days Inn sign and puts on there. So it gets a little age on it. And then the C property is when you have the local one, like the Colonial Manor out here. I built an A property in Greenville. There are not many A properties in towns less than 15,000 people. What happened in Greenville is we draw people for 60 miles, people from Luverne, Fort Deposit, Georgiana. The same thing here. If we put an A-class facility here, we would draw people from Atmore, Flemington, Cassaberry, Evergreen, because they don't have a choice. I did a little study on the population there. So the population in Greenville is within 200 people of what Bruton and East Bruton population is. So I've combined the Bruton and East Bruton population. We're right around the 8,000 number here. This is 2019 numbers I have. In Greenville, we have 148,000 square feet. In Bruton, we have 63,000 square feet. That is 60-something percent less square footage, which is, I would understand that because of the zoning. It's not easy to build a storage facility in the way we have the lands on here. There's two pieces of paper that are in your folder right there. You've got the one that's the survey, but the two papers you see are copies of a bank's appraisal three years ago. If you'll look at the one that's got the occupancy listed there in order, it's about four different facilities there. It shows you 90, 94, 95 percent. It's in one column. That's a percent occupancy in Greenville of the three storage facilities up there. They're in the 95-plus percent with twice the square footage that we have in Bruton. I actually shopped the B&amp;G guys down here a couple of months ago. Dog was getting out of college, so I thought it'd be a good time for me to just go through there. Very professional, it's very clean. The ladies there were first class. She showed me a 10 by 10. This may be the most important thing I tell you all day today. And I told her I think it's one a little bit bigger, and she said I didn't have one, but she'd show me another 10 by 10. And I said, ma'am, undoubtedly, you are full. She says, yes, I have two 10 by 10s. That's all I have in here. I said, how much is it? She said $188. So if you go Google "storage facilities" on your website, you'll see the only thing they list is what they have empty. And right now, they have two sizes empty. That $188, if you look on that other sheet of that appraisal that you see there, there's one number on there. I think it's $89. $89 is the price of a climate-controlled storage unit 10 by 10 in Greenville. So right now, we are paying about twice the number in dollars in Bruton for the same climate control. And I don't blame them. If they're full, they should have twice the square footage in the town. Okay. I told you I'd be 10 minutes, so I'm at eight. Being a good neighbor, if you were to park a car in front of a storage facility for 15 minutes, the odds are you will never see a guy drive in there. It is probably the least trafficked business in town. People store stuff, and a lot of times, they won't come back for six months or a year. I plan to just put two lights up on the highway, and the rest of the time, I'm going to be subtle lights down the buildings, and the neighbors will never know a place popped up there on them. Last thing, to the city of Bruton. This will be done in three phases. The Greenville that we have is 80,000 square feet. That would be our goal, to get 80,000 square feet in six to seven years. That would be roughly $5 million. I paid the city of Greenville more property tax money than the McDonald's and the Kentucky Fried Chicken and the Arby's put together. So we do not have sales tax, so you don't get sales tax out of us, but you do get a nice piece of property that generates a good property tax. That's it, guys. Thank you all so much for your time.
Is anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of it? Hearing none, I close the hearing. Under new business, the first item is approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget, resolution number 21-0830-1, and I'll call on Brooke Harden.
And we've been meeting with the budget committee a couple of times over the last couple of weeks. It's made up of Counselor Broughton, Counselor Brown, and Counselor Barton. I'm given a departmental overview. We have several funds that are under General Fund, and then we have a few enterprise funds that are standalone in our reserve fund. The budget process takes a good bit of time. It is made with the department head's input and council committee input, and we have not finished our current fiscal year, so we kind of have to estimate where we're going to be at the end of next month. But I think we've done a pretty good job estimating that. This past year, we had a few things that altered our budget a little, which was, obviously, we had a hurricane and we had COVID. So hopefully, we've got a good budget going forward and are prepared. This is a brief summary of our budget as a comparison to last year. So you'll see we have gone up a little bit in our budget numbers, but I don't foresee anything major there. Our town has been very lucky in that we have not experienced a huge revenue loss due to COVID. We haven't lost a lot of any sales tax revenue, lodging tax, where bigger cities have unfortunately had those type of losses. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Our budget is listed in the resolution.
I would just like to say one thing. Under the reserve budget, there's, shows a reserve for an art over Bellevue Avenue, which is not going to be done in the next 12 months. So if you were looking into the details and you saw that, that was from a study several years ago.
So it's been taken out.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, resolution 21-0830-1.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Broughton, a second by Counselor Barton, to approve resolution number 210830-1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
No.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
No.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Resolution 210830-1 is approved.
Next item is to approve a 94.01 economic development grant to Ginnie Carter's Chug-Sow Food Spot, resolution number 21-0830-2.
Mayor, I have a motion to approve resolution number 210830-2.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Watson, a second by Counselor Barton, to approve resolution Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Resolution 21-0830-2 is approved.
Next item is to approve a liquor license for Mayhem LLC DBA Bruton Package Two. That's resolution number 21-0830-3.
Motion to approve, resolution 21-0830-3.
A second.
I have a motion by Counselor Brown, a second by Counselor Jennings, to approve resolution Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Resolution 21-0830 is approved.
Next item is approve permitting of mini warehouse storage unit in a B3 general business district, ordinance number 21-0830-4, and I'll call on Steve Uhlhouse.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Planning Commission satisfied our requirements for publication. We met. The consent or the conclusion of the Planning Commission was to present a letter of recommendation to the City Council to approve mini storage warehouse units being placed in a B3 general business district by special exception. That would mean if someone wanted to construct mini storage warehouse units, they would have to go before the Board of Zoning Adjustments for a hearing. That would mean all property owners who were around that property within 300 feet would receive certified notice. Publication would occur in the newspaper. There would be a public hearing, so the public would be aware, and they would have opportunity to speak in favor of or against. It's probably, not probably, it's definitely the prudent way to go. There are properties in Bruton where mini storage warehouse units could go, but having public input and sending it by special exception to the Board of Zoning Adjustments is wise and safe, and the Planning Commission recommends the City Council approve this.
First item would be to introduce ordinance number 21-0830-4.
Motion to introduce 21-0830-4. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Brown, a second by Counselor Watson, to introduce ordinance Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Ordinance 210830-4 has been introduced.
Next item we would want to consider today, we would need a motion for immediate consideration.
Mayor, motion to, I'm going to consider ordinance number 21-0830-4. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Barton, a second by Counselor Brown, to immediately consider ordinance 210830-4. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
No.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
We will table the discussion to the next meeting.
Next item is to approve the sale of surplus property located at 1006 Douglas Avenue, Bruton, and I'll call on the clerk.
And we received an offer from Amy Black from Cut Nut Salon to purchase surplus property located at 1006 Douglas Avenue. We had to have the property lines redrawn and went ahead and did a survey and an appraisal. She will obviously have to do her own appraisal through her financial institution, but she has offered the asking price, which was $55,000, which is what the city actually paid for. The city has agreed to do roof maintenance, whether that's the entire roof or wherever there's a problem. So that's included in that. If either one of y'all would like to speak, feel free, but I think the plan is for them to remodel and move the salon to that location. If I'm leaving anything out, please let me know.
So the first thing we would need to do is introduce ordinance number 21-0830-5.
Motion to introduce ordinance 21-0830-5. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Brown, a second by Counselor Broughton, to introduce ordinance 210830-5. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
No.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Okay.
The next item we would want to put on today was for immediate consideration of ordinance 21-0830-5.
Motion for immediate consideration for 21-08-
Joe voted no to introduce that ordinance, so we would not continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a no on the introduction?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I thought immediate consideration was-
That was an introduction. But either didn't afford to introduce it. Is that correct?
That, I was saying, correct. My motion intent was to immediately consider it.
Gotcha. So maybe we should try that one more time then?
I want to introduce it. I have a problem introducing it, but my problem is that unless it's an emergency-
The immediate, right.
I don't vote on anything overnight.
Correct. So we have a motion by Counselor Brown and a second by Counselor Broughton to introduce ordinance-
I would have said, yes, on the introduction.
So I'm going to go through the vote one more time for the introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton. Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
So ordinance 210830-5 has been introduced.
The second part of that would be the immediate consideration.
Motion for immediate consideration for 21-0830-5. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Brown, a second by Counselor Barton, for immediate consideration of ordinance 210830-5. Is there any discussion?
Yes. When we bought the property initially, I can't speak for them. I never saw an appraisal on it. I don't think that we can do that legally.
We have one.
We never saw it.
I can bring it to you.
Yeah, okay, well-
Where we purchased it, and then we have an updated one.
What I'm saying is, we're getting ready to buy it and sell it, and I haven't seen an appraisal on it yet. And I just wanted, I want that on the record.
Yes. I'll be happy to bring you a copy. We have two.
We don't have any.
Mm-hmm. So this is a motion for immediate consideration. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
No.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
No.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
So we will table the vote to the next meeting.
Next item, get some discussion on an intersection of Spring Street and Brookwood Drive, and then actually a couple of other intersections. And this is a no-cost service agreement that I talked Counselor Broughton and Counselor Barton about. So it's resolution number 21-0830-6 that we get Southern Engineering to look at those intersections.
May I make a motion, resolution 21-0830-6.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Broughton, a second by Counselor Barton, to approve resolution Is there any discussion?
No, may I say there'd be no cost?
That's correct.
Okay.
You are correct. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
Resolution 210830-6 is approved.
We have a board member whose term is expiring on the Bruton Public Library Board. That's a council appointment, and I call on the chairman of the committee, which is made up of Counselor Watson and Counselor Jennings. I call on Counselor Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to, we're going to make a motion to reappoint Liz Garrett to the Library Board. Second.
I have a motion by the committee to reappoint Liz Garrett to the Bruton Public Library Board. Is there any further discussion? Okay, she will be reappointed.
There's no voting?
You know, it's a council appointment. The committee appointed it.
Next is approve municipal arraignment and municipal court dates for 2022. They're attached to your-
And we would need a vote on this.
Information. So we will need a-
It's two separate dates for arraignment and municipal court dates.
So which one I'm going to vote on? I'd like to make a motion to approve the municipal arrangement dates.
Right. It's arraignment and municipal court dates. Both of them.
In one motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One motion of them.
Just one big motion will approve both of them.
Okay. I'll make a vote to approve the municipal arrangement date and the municipal court date. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Broughton, a second by Counselor Watson, to approve the municipal arraignment and municipal court dates for 2022. Is there any further questions or discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Jennings.
Yes.
Counselor Broughton.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Yes.
Counselor Barton.
Yes.
So the arraignment and municipal court dates are set.
Next item is to appoint a court clerk. I appoint Dar Suttin. And the last item today is a proclamation. It's been 20 years since 9/11. And this is a joint proclamation, us and the city of East Bruton and the county, and it will be put in an appropriate case at the county courthouse along with some other items. Concurrent, joint 9/11 commemorative proclamation. Where September 11, 2021 marks the 20th anniversary of the September 11, 2001 attack on American souls, wherein 2,977 souls perished. And where of this number, 343 were firefighters and 60 were police officers. And where additional recognition is given to the many American military personnel and contractors who have since died in combat operations of the global war on terrorism. And where three Escamby County, Alabama natives gave their lives in service to this great nation, including United States Army Sergeant Damaris C. Thurman, who died September 11, 2001, in the Pentagon attack. United States Marine Corps Corporal Christopher D. Winchester, who died July 14, 2005, in trouble Iraq. The United States Marine Corps Corporal Travis M. Nelson, who died August 18, 2011, in Hillman Province, Afghanistan. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of Bruton, Alabama, that on September 11, 2021, the city of Bruton and all its residents honor and give special recognition and memory- in memory of heroes, United States Army Sergeant Damaris C. Thurman, Marine Corps Corporal Christopher D. Winchester, and the United States Marine Corps Lance Corporal Travis M. Nelson, and to all first responders, fire police, and emergency medical responders for their selfless dedication to fellow citizens displayed through heroic actions over 20 years, which have come and gone, proclaiming this 30th day of August, 2021. That meeting is adjourned.